Clay Township Board of Trustees meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Murray.
Here.
Joanne Shurkey.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the Joe Char special assessment road paving. I'll entertain a motion to open it up.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for Joe Char road paving at 6:02 PM.
Support.
Okay, we got motion and support, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So, open up the public hearing for Joe Char. If you, anyone wants to come up and say what they want to say, and I think we have Anthony, our engineer, he's gonna go over what we're gonna do on our end for the sewer part. But, maybe we'll have you come up first, Anthony, and then if they have any questions, they can come up and answer them later. I think that's be. Nine nine five five. You'll have to put a pin in. Here, I'll get it.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, so, Anthony Theodoro from Project Control Engineering, and in the the aspect, I guess, that we want to talk about is something we encountered and discovered. It's been an issue that Steyer Sub's known about, but especially people on Joe Char. But, at the end of Joe Char, which is shown in the map here, we discovered while doing our sewer inspection for the entire township, a, you know, a dip in the sewer pipe just under the road. And, so there's a drawing that we've done. Just go right here. So, it's from manhole to manhole that that we look, that we inspect from pipe sec, in a pipe segment. And so, I'm trying to get this closer, so you can kind of see. What we did is we created a profile of that pipe. So, what you see here is, is the dark black lines what the pipe's supposed to be. And what it is right now is this, this kind of faded line here.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, you can see the extent of it, and each one of these little circles is a house tap. So, there's a pipe coming into it. And so, you can see that, you know, starting about this, this first house from that manhole, you start to see the sag begin, and then, and that's a, like, ten inch. So, this one here is kind of a problem because it's way below where that, so that means that, that house is service line is sagged with the pipe. And then you have this one here, it's already also close to, you know, it's at that, they're flexible pipe, you know, plastic pipe, so they're sagging with the pipe segment. And so, what we've seen in other situations, especially along the water, is that that will eventually break, and then you'll have a sinkhole in the road, and you'll have those kinds of issues, so.
What's the measurement from where it should be to the, where it's sagged, the worst about?
Right, so the pipe's diameter is ten, ten inches?
Okay.
So, you can kind of see where the worst-case scenario, you're probably at ten inches at the deepest part of the sag. Because this was done using a inclinometer survey, so we, our camera, robotic camera can go through the sewer pipe and determine its, you know, as it's dipping and as it's coming back up, it can create a pro, that profile, what you see here. So, this was all done during our Saw Grant through the state. So, obviously, we want to investigate all the options, but one of the first and obvious options is to open cut that pipe and to do a repair. Obviously, there can be a seg, from sag to sag replacement of the pipe, and then doing a proper bedding. And then, what we do in these instances, because of the nature of the soils, will create a ballast, which is, we undercut under that pipe a little farther, and we put in a clean, what we have here is six A stone material that's compacted, and that allows the pipe to, that avoids that situation from happening again. So, over ballasting, and then, once that's done, you backfill, and then you can, you can repave the road. So, that's the most conventional option, which all, you know, contractors can, can can provide you estimates for. We actually got Clancy to give us an estimate, and I've done an engineering estimate of cost, and they were very similar. Actually, Clancy was a little lower than me. So, in terms of the road repaving, obviously, this is just that segment's road repaving, but this would be done, this pavement width and everything would be done for the entire Joe Char to Ed Lane, so. Looking back at the map, so, I'm thinking that what has been proposed is to pave, and that's what our engineering estimate of cost looks at, is repaving all the way to Ed Lane, so all of Joe Char. And so, we can look at the estimates at this point, or?
Um.
Ask any questions, some technical questions first?
Yeah.
So, looking at this map here, you have the Bobian Creek that's coming in, and I think even some of the local residents said that when they built Steyer Sub, the Bobian Creek used to continue on through. And so, what's, that seems logical.
That's not what happened.
Isn't it? Okay, what happened?
Well, I've been there thirty-three years.
Okay.
So, when the first project came to pave it, they told us to put drains inside.
Okay, edge drain?
So, in front of my house, everything stayed perfect, except the drains and everything else. So, about four years ago, the guy at that lot that you're talking about, bringing gravel train after gravel train for days.
Okay.
Down a fifteen-ton weight in the road, just exceeding this fifteen-ton. And I called the township, I called St. Clair County, couldn't get no help. So, he just kept on doing it, and that's why our road had a valley in it.
I see.
Where it was rolled, water. After that, that's what happened to it. So, I'm just wondering.
That might work hand-in-hand with the same concept, right?
Well, he had the trucks in where you're repairing now.
Yep.
Twenty-five tons on each axle.
Yep.
He gave our whole road and tried to get people aboard to do something, but couldn't get them.
Right. So, I mean, obviously, we've done some soil testing to determine some of the characteristics of the soil. Organic soils, which are in the bottom of the canals, one of the characteristics of them is they act like a sponge. And so, they'll compress under weight, under weight loads. So, you're, what you've seen could be explaining why that spongy material compressed, right?
Yeah, but we stopped it, and we went at that date and seen, I mean, when there was a sign down the road.
Yeah.
It said, "Go and see fifteen ton."
Yeah.
So, when we bring gravel train after gravel train for days, that's where the road had the valley. And it did it all the way down our whole road. I was there for the first road drive. It was hard, a few hands back on it.
Yeah.
But, it said to put drains in, going all the way to put drains in. Now, I'm gonna have to put a whole new road in with a perfect road from my house.
Well, how old's the road? What's the age?
It's probably about twenty years old.
Okay. I mean, HMA, HMA asphalt has a lifespan, right?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, if it's survived twenty years, right, then it's approaching its end of life anyways. But, I know that that segment has gotten worse than.
So, once we're looking at all this again, someone decides to pull out, and it's going down the road, you know, we're gonna have to.
I, I think what, what might, may have happened, I don't know for sure, but Joe Char's a private road. And we don't really have that much enforcement capabilities on private roads.
Yeah, but he was faithful, there was close enough.
Right, it, it, it was your homeowners association, or, or you guys were the ones that would have to say, hey, you gotta stop doing this.
I did, but I had to get the township.
Well, like I say, the township doesn't have any juice.
Yeah, but you're gonna pay for the sewer problem now?
Well, apparently.
He did, the guy that had that lot over there, that's why we have all these problems right now.
Right, I understand that, it's, you're gonna, you lost the. On a private road, what, what we can enforce and how it works is totally different than on a public road.
I know that's what's coming, we have this problem.
Mm-hmm.
Someone would give up, I took pictures of the trucks, I couldn't get no one on board to get a lawyer to sue me.
Right, the township couldn't write a ticket for, for that because it's a private road.
Maybe we could stack them.
Well, that's why you guys need an association, and I've been telling you that forever.
That was the association, it didn't work out.
Well.
Which got real rough, a lot of people, and I said, listen, they told us all to put drains in, no one wanted to do it.
Right.
To this day, it's, well, hey, you got the rain now.
Okay, well.
So, one of you of us had followed the rules and kept the road up in front of our house, now I gotta pay for it.
Like I said, if you had an association, you got, the association could hire someone to plow in the winter.
So, he's in charge of the association now, dumps gravel in the middle of the road.
Well, I, you know what?
Let me ask a question.
We can't stop.
So, the, so the drains were put in, but not in this, in front of this person's life?
They were really told to put a drain in every one on the stop side, because they were pushing the road right to the swamps. And I'm sure, we're not gonna tell you, say you need to put it in because you can have problems later on, because there's no inches on this road.
Okay.
So, water's often go to the swamp side.
So, there's a type of tile drain, plastic perforated drain along the edge of the. Along the edge of. And so, how did that help the road not cave in front of your place? So, the water was able to evacuate through that pipe in front of your road, but not his? Wouldn't that make the road?
Well, I had a drain.
Go in?
And it drained the great water when I moved in. That's what we do, we put drains in to keep the water, water, we all know it's a problem.
Yeah, but when soil compresses, it has memory, so it never comes back. So, if the water evacuates through your drain tiles and subsides.
It's not a drain, it's a solid pipe that goes right to the road, it doesn't leach out, it contains all the water, and goes right into the swamp.
Ah, that's like your storm water, so it's like a pop-up drain and then a solid pipe out to the canal? Okay, gotcha.
Six solve, and it stretches, I put it in after they did the road, and I seen where the little old spot where it's old water there on the side of the road, and took care of all the little problems on two laps. Now, the road is valley because of the filling that they did.
Yeah.
For four days straight.
Yeah. So, like a, yeah, so, yeah, solid pipe under the road.
It's not under the road.
Then the side of the road?
I didn't mess it up on the road, it stayed. Like I said, I did everything that they told me to do back then, twenty-five years ago, and it stayed good.
So, this, the east side, the canal side, is where this pipe is, or on?
Swamp side.
So, the, the west side, near the houses?
East side.
East side, okay, so, okay, so, so this is where that water is draining off? I, I'm just, I'm having trouble seeing the correlation between that and, and the dip at the end of the road, when the load would have traveled across the whole course of the road to get there.
Yeah, but it, the water, the grass hill would, uh, wouldn't go over there. Lot of the roads like that, it's gonna just rain off the road, or the swamp, and people fell off, and it's, yeah, I think that's why they pulled it.
So, maybe there was water there, like, through the stop?
And that didn't work. You can, it was good that you wait to put the drains in after, then you see where the water is playing, and put it in where the most water was. But they didn't move the road, that was flat.
Okay.
I mean, and to save my road, that's been there twenty-five years. I'm not trying to say it's, you know, you wrote it, yeah.
Yeah. No, definitely, stormwater management on the road needed to be done.
If you sit there and watch it, when it rains, it all lays in the middle of the road, by my house.
Yeah, I don't think we've gotten into the design of the rebuilding of the road yet. We're just working on the stuff, the sewer area, that one segment, that's all we've touched. So, that, I guess, would be for another design time, and we would take those factors into consideration, right?
Should, because it's just gonna be another stop.
Yep, yep.
Twenty years, we're gonna have the same problem.
Yeah. Yeah, well, this isn't the only road I've seen in the area that I've had to do the same thing for, so. This is kind of not an uncommon situation, but, I'll get to it. And there's actually provisions in our, in our code when we have this situation happen. So, so the, the problem is not necessarily up here in this segment of the, of the cross-section. It's down here in the bedding of the pipe, at least for our pipe, right? So, you know, maybe deterioration in the HMA road over twenty years, there's many reasons for re-staw. I, I do, I do think that could be part of it. In this section right here, I could see that.
Right where you guys are looking.
Right, because let's say you have these heavy loads, the gravel trains, as you said, and they're, they're, you know, it's cyclic loading as you're driving over it. And that's, that's driving this down, and this could be a spongy organic material, and then it compresses, right? And that causes it to dip. But, there has to be a reason why it just happened here, and not in multiple locations along the road, right?
Well, yeah, because it was semi-trucks going back and forth.
Yeah, I guess, but I mean, this is at the end of the road, so it would have had to pass Steyer and Joe Char and come all the way down, right? So, you're having that same load go back and forth over the entire.
Mm-hmm. That's when you run off the line. I'm surprised the block.
This is in the center of the road. Let me see where it's, and plan. But, I guess the, from, from my standpoint, what I focus on is not letting this happen again when we put, if we do the repair of the sewer.
If you're gonna do it now, let's put some drains in.
Yeah, I agree that all water on the road, surface water should be evacuated accordingly, yeah, so. So, so anyway, that's the section of pipe that's of concern, the rest of the pipe is good, and actually, the, the pipe itself is still intact. We even, we even cambered up the laterals, right? And those laterals, obviously, they, they have an elbow and they come down, so, so judging how far they've gone down, and if that's compromised them or not. I don't think there's any problems in the water line, so.
I don't think pitches bringing out. I worked on it before, we take a heavy truck over, you don't think so? Because in front of my house, when I moved in, water was saturated, and I had the township telling me to dig it up. They did a water main break, and then you were proper, it was spraying out.
Yeah.
And that's, you don't think a little spray like that over ten, twenty years would cause that?
Uh, I'll tell you.
Twenty years, it'd need a bigger hole.
I'll tell you what.
No.
The water would need a bigger hole in the main where it's leaking. Water cuts right through just about anything. I think what I'm trying to say is how hard it would be to just expose it.
The, the water main?
Why don't we dig that up? We would've saved a lot of money by doing cameras, if we would've just dug it up. And one day, took a look at it, it was a whole problem.
Well, the difference between the sewer pipe and the water is the, the sewer pipe's a gravity pipe, so it's not under any pressure. Versus the water mains under forty to forty-five PSI pressure. So, that pressure would cause so much water. And I've seen this firsthand, just around the corner, Ira had a big leak right there in Poublier. And I was helping them find where this leak is, right?
Out in the field.
And we called Mystic, right? And so, the Senco guy came out, and he's trying to find the gas line, and he's across the street from us. And he's walking, and we're talking to him, and he went down to his chest in the ground, because that's, it was like quicksand, you know? We ran over there and got him before he went all the way down, you know? So, so, I think if there was any kind of water leak over an extended period of time, there's no way, we'd be losing people and dogs and then cars and everything else in it, you know? So, it's a little bit more easy to spot a water, sewer leaks harder because it's not under pressure.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, just where, this is the section in, it's hard to understand, the topographic survey. Yep, this is the top view. This is the top view, that's the pipe, running from manhole to manhole. So, you can kind of see where it's located on the edge, on the edge of the road. So, this is the canal over here, so it favors the canal side, the location of the pipe. And though, these crossings cross the road, right? Right here, to the houses, or empty lot. So, it's affecting.
Just, just as a point, Anthony, when, when an FBA starts to excavate, you probably would uncover a water leak at that point in time. You know, and then you take care of it pretty much at that point.
Yeah. You, you won't miss a water leak.
Right.
You won't miss it.
There's a water leak, just a saddle leak, Mark. What's gonna happen is it's gonna surface right away down there because everything's so saturated with water.
Oh, well, right, yeah.
Nothing more than marsh. But, I guarantee you that that water leak would come up. And water leaks, they don't take very long to do it either. The water itself will cut a hole bigger than whatever it's coming out of.
Sure.
And as time goes on, may it be stainless steel, may it be cast iron, may it, whatever the material is, it will make a bigger hole.
I've, I've seen, I've seen plenty of them, so I understand what you're talking about, yep.
So, I guess, we've done some cost estimates for the, from the township side for the sewer, and then I've had Clancy estimate them. If you want, we can look at those. So, it's our cost breakdown, this is my engineer's estimate of cost of the ten-inch pipe. This would be, I guess, the worst-case scenario, right, where we have to go from the whole end of the sag to the whole end of the sag doing an open cut, and there's some tree trimming, there's a couple of trees in the way. But, all in all, with the construction costs, it's at ninety thousand, and then with engineering and everything, it's a hundred and eleven thousand. There's a contingency in there as well, ten percent. If you look at that compared to an estimate that was done, Clancy, same breakdown, he's at ninety-six, seven, nine, five, so, we're close, this is recent, this is a month ago.
So, to be clear, though, there's nothing leaking right now?
No.
Sewer, no.
It's just sagged right now.
Sagged right now.
But, if we don't.
I understand, but if the special assessment were to not go through, it's not like we need to hurry up and get in there and fix something.
Right.
It's not leaking at this time, it's just a, we might as well fix it while it's tore apart, if they're going to pave the road.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so, other communities around us have the similar problems, and in Baltimore, they have one on Stratford Sub on Twenty-four Mile Road. And contractor put that in, it had the sag in the pipe, bedding issue, same, same similar soils. And there was a settlement, and, and they're still back, they bought a vector with the settlement instead of fixing this sag because the road was brand-new. And they just keep cleaning it, you know, it's just a maintenance issue, until the road gets to the end of its life, in which case, then, they figured they'll fix the, the road. So, that's the kind of, it can last for a long time, but it's a maintenance issue, you know?
And there's been no real maintenance issues since we've never had to remove any blockage or anything on the maintenance side. And the hot water that it's actually holding is only about six inches of the ten-inch pipe.
Right.
It's just a small dip.
Yeah, the difference in our case is there's a few homes at, at the upstream of that versus, you Baltimore's example, there's an entire subdivision.
Sure.
Passing, that's at the end of the subdivision, so.
Well, like Cindy said, the whole idea of this, if they're gonna do the special assessment and pave it, we need to get it fixed. But, if, if, if the pavement, if the special assessment does not go through,
Yep.
we don't really necessarily have the time element where we gotta fix it, like, in the next few months.
Right, right, I mean, where, where time would become important is if, for example, these, these service lines right here.
Start pulling out.
Will break, will break.
Right.
Because what, what has, it's not about matter of it undermining the road anymore than it's been undermined, it's that your proximity to the canal and the fact that we have pump stations down, a lot of pump stations downstream of that, you'd be basically bringing in water from the marshes that can cause a problem downstream to all our pump stations. So, this one goes to actually Zobel, which is, goes through Forest Main, that goes all the way to Colony Tower through the marshes. So, you wouldn't have to be causing an Ira problem, because this goes to Ira, this flow, and then back, back to Clay. So, you would be inundating the last station in Ira Township with flows from the marshes, which we would have to immediately run around, dig up and address, so, that's happening. Along the St. Clair River there, where there's flooding, it's, it's a big problem.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think, I think Clancy's quote's pretty reasonable, and I know from experience, if you have an emergency fix, they tend to be three times, four times more money than does planned work. Alan?
Do you understand too?
Small.
The amount that the road itself has settled is not even close, the main is not even close to that.
Right.
The road is settled probably three or four times that amount.
Right.
Because of where that canal used to come through there.
Yep, it's settling between the pipe and the road.
Yes.
Not, not below the pipe.
When Bobian Creek used to come through there, that's before John and Ed started, when they added, added on to those roads.
Right.
Joe Char was a whole lot shorter when they started the sub.
Mm-hmm.
And they diverted the canal, and then filled that in and continued the road for.
And I guess historical maps could determine.
Yeah, those are add-on.
Where it was, yeah. Sure, there's, there's lots of maps and records. But, but yeah, that would be the concerning thing, if you had that issue. And there's a middle road option, you could preemptively dig up those taps and recon, you know, dig them back and connect them at the elevation they're at, because right now, they're, they're flexing down, right? So, it, that's your, that's your main concern. Is inundation of the sewer system.
So, Anthony, those two quotes that you showed, the one for a hundred and ten or whatever it was, and the other one for ninety-six. So, a hundred and eleven, so that was the, that's the recent quote, right?
Yeah, so this is my engineer's estimate of cost, I actually had a contractor.
Clancy gave us a quote.
So, the other one you showed was ninety-six thousand, where did that come from? Because the first quote we saw here was two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, these are the same thing. One is mine, which, which I use based on numbers coming in from recent bids. And then this one's actually from Clancy on twenty-six there.
The original one, two hundred thousand include the paving, didn't it?
Yeah, I have that one, I have that one.
So, yeah, it's still.
I have road only, so if you look at road only, the cost, and this would be all the way to Ed Lane, two oh one, two hundred.
Okay.
Which is the road.
I just want to get a clear understanding of that.
Yeah, so road only would be two fifty-nine with engineering, and sewer only is a hundred and eleven. And then we had Clancy give us a price for the sewer only, and that's what it was, so.
Alan?
Anthony, is there other ways, like we've been talking about, if we were to take and excavate the top off that main and possibly pick that main up, being it isn't broke, it's just flexed? We already know there's no cracks in it because there's no infiltration.
And the back?
And then, the question is, to re-bed what's there? To take care of the issue for the main itself?
Well, I mean, the first thing, cost savings would be this one, right, because this one's the pipe. So, if you weren't gonna replace the pipe, that's a fifty-three thousand dollar line I did. The other thing is, is that this price is for them to mobilize to do just this job. So, even Clancy himself said this is way high because it's a one, it's not a part of a bigger project, it's not something where, you know, materials are spread over a larger order, everything's small order, it's all gonna be the highest price. So, that's why this, these estimates are your high end, and what you're trying to do is figure out, maybe by grouping it with another project, or, you know, because we have other projects that will come up in the township. And, you know, if it's not an emergency issue, right, then I think that, you know, looking at it in terms of a small part of a bigger project with the township would reduce this cost for this portion of work. But. But truss pipe, I guess, you know, if it sags, it's like, it's like any flexible material. It's gone past its modulous elasticity. It's now gonna be a banana, right? To get the banana to go back straight, it's not gonna be easy. It may not. You know, it's just like wood is warped and it won't go back straight.
Are they back right now?
Uh, this is a truss pipe.
No, it's truss pipe. The one that's in there now, though. The one that's in there now is truss pipe. It's A B S pipe and it's injecting concrete all the way around the double wall.
Yeah, it's double wall. So yeah, you know, I would suspect if you were to cut it open, what you'd see is that the plastics is deformed. And the inside injection cementitious material is all crushed, right? Especially at the top. And it's probably got gaps in the bottom. So it's kind of...
I mean, not that this isn't all very informative, but it really has nothing to do with the Joe Char paving public hearings. So if we could get back on track with our agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is definitely a conversation, big conversation for a later time, but we need to
Right.
figure out if we're paving the road first.
We did have one person, one rename anonymous, give us a written, a written letter basically saying that they are not for the special assessment. So... Do we have any other comments for the special assessment for Joe Char at this time, or?
I'm not for it, but all I gotta say.
Okay.
What's your answer?
Seven three two four.
What we'll have to do is, is, sure, is do another vote, right? Or?
Well, basically what this is, I'll come up here for a minute.
Thank you.
So the special assessment originated about a year ago by petition from the homeowners.
Right.
So, and over the time, we've actually had three new homeowners and we've had some substantial changes in the project itself, which the costs have been increased. So now what we're doing, this public hearing is by board, by board, but not by petition. So you're here, the people are here tonight to determine if we go forward or not with this, with the special assessment. Twenty percent of the frontage has to say they don't want it. And then, excuse me, then the board will not proceed. And you, if you want to pave again, would have to come to us with a petition again. So, so no vote necessarily. It's just a public hearing. I'll take notes of whoever is opposed or for it that are here tonight. And then we can either go forward with getting more cost, final cost, and then hold another public hearing.
Okay.
And go forward. Okay?
I'm for it.
Okay.
Seven three five oh.
Seven, I don't wanna touch your computer.
So the anonymous person, do we know how much frontage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I have all the frontages written down. So depending on what anyone says, and we did have, yeah, the one written opposition of it. So, and then the final cost, so approximately right now what we're looking at is per parcel, on a per parcel basis of approximately four hundred and thirty-eight dollars per year for fifteen years, I think is what the board said that they were going to do. However, the final cost, now if we're talking additional drainage and stuff, so this, you know, obviously is subject to change. Yeah, and then it's gonna come back to the same thing like Mr. Bryson was saying, that we're not gonna have the enforcement and we're not gonna, that's not gonna be included in anything for us to go out and say, you know, you didn't do it. We owe contract with the contractor themselves for what our project, you know, is gonna include. And then if you didn't want tho, that type of thing included in the special assessment, then it would be up to the individuals. And you may wind up in the same, you know, scenario where you did it, they didn't, they did. But with it being a private road, you're gonna kinda be on your own to get together as neighbors and, you know, form an association and maybe have some rules and things that, you know, collect fees that you can upkeep, you know, continue to maintain the road going forward.
Maintain a road, if you're on a private road, you're responsible for the whole of your house.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a lot of private roads in the township. So people, they've kinda come together as neighbors and pooled their money and, you know, set up funds and stuff where they can continue to do that kinda stuff, plowing and, you know, grading or things that they need. So, so basically tonight with the public hearing is we want the voice to say, are we going forward? Or are we just, as the township, gonna do our portion and not the whole entire road? So it's important. There will be one more public hearing that you will also have another voice, but at this time, we're, you know, we need to know what the next step is gonna be. So... This was, this is on a per parcel basis because most of them in here are sixty-foot lots. There's, I think, four people total that have more than that. So equitably and, you know, and everybody's getting the same benefits. So this seemed like the best way. When this was how the petition was originally presented to us, was on a per parcel. So rather than having four people carry the extra burden for the other, you know, eighteen parcels, so this is done on a per parcel basis. So if you had two, you would pay, yeah. But if it's combined, if it's already one parcel, then you would just pay the one fee. I guess the thing with the two is it's still a sellable lot, you know, so you would maybe recoup those fees. I don't know.
When you take the parcel and put it as a, as combined, can you go back? Do you say by combined, I already combined the parts. Can I go back and take it back?
Definitely. They don't meet our current zoning setbacks, so it would...
I already did mine twenty years ago.
Yeah, so there would be, you know, probably no reason that you would undo that. Actually, we're going with, through P C E and I think they're putting stuff out to bid. So this, this quote was one that we had received previously that, and then already, or the supervisor had gone through, I think, with someone from P C E. So the total that we had come up with, that this is based off of, which varies from what you have there, was a hundred and forty-four thousand. So we've got some difference there for the, the paving portion for the residents. So I don't know if some...
That was without inspection and some other things.
And I'm not sure.
What we did to determine what it actually is is we asked contractors to ask the pricing for the two parts, right?
Yeah.
And so we can see that the, the way that we itemized breakdown is quite a lot of things that are itemized that are associated with the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Versus just a second pipe on the ground, right? Because you wouldn't ever do anything below the subgrade of the road.
Right.
You know, if it was just a road.
Yeah, yeah. So there's definitely, you know, a point where there's gonna be some more, some final figures and we wouldn't, there'd be another resolution. And then the pricing and the, the folks would have another opportunity to say, you know, at that point. But this, we're not even gonna go get additional final figures or anything until this is determined, you know, if the special assessment is gonna go any further. So, and I do have copies if anyone afterwards needs, you know, just kind of the breakdown. But it's important that you give me your address before you leave here today. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, thanks. I wanna just point out two things real quick to go with that. Was it nine, nine five?
Nine nine five five.
So just so you can see in the estimates, and anybody's estimate would have this. So you have your, your construction budget and in it you'll have engineering and contract administration. Whoever, whoever engineer designs the road, if it's us or it's another engineering firm, they would make sure that the contractor that's hired follows all the right requirements for the road design. So that, that wouldn't be something where it's like all lumped on the residents. In your, in your construction budget, you would have, you know, a line item there, just shown here, that a professional that's helping you, guiding you through the process. You've hired that person. That person's responsible for the integrity of the road design, right? So they're making sure the contractor's honest and they're doing all the right steps. The other thing was drainage. I wanted to see if there's any drainage. So you have shoulder aggregate, wear, maintenance gravel, H M A course. So, yeah, so, so drainage could be that portion that, you know, each resident takes after just a little bit of their house.
All right, anything else right now? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing for the George Char Road Special Paving Assessment at six forty-two P M.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, okay? Public hearing's closed. Now we're in our general session. Bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Bill's payable in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Marty Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next is the supervisor's report. And I try to get through it without coughing too much. I got the Bryson hack. Been doing a lot of work actually with Anthony on the sewer interceptor, on the wastewater treatment plant authority moving forward. I think I got, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth coming up, working on Pearl Beach Pier and Spark Grant, Spark Grant Projects. And a few other things too going on. It's actually been pretty busy. I was talking to the E P A about getting our million dollar grant we acquired to do our, our sewer interceptor project. And I asked them about, you know, we, we put in, I asked for a grant for two and a half million dollars for the waterline project. And when we applied, they said we'd hear in October or November. And the gal kinda laughed and said, no, you'll, at the earliest it will be next May, but it'll probably be this time next year before we hear anything. We're gonna check with U S Farm and Ag, right, for possible funding and, and low, if not at least low interest rates on, on that. So just wanted to let, let the board know on that. The road paving, I'm not sure if it's actually done or not on Harson's Island, what they did, golf course, middle channel, part of North Channel, Ames Road, Bates Road. They may do additional process where they do a fogging layer, but they were, haven't really decided yet if they're gonna do that or not. They're, they're doing a wait and see. But they did do Phelps Road. It was completed last Tuesday. If you went down there, it, it looks pretty, pretty good. So that, that road is, is done.
They stopped the stripe and everything?
What?
They stopped the stripe?
Yeah, yeah, on both of them. They'll probably do them all at the same time. Looking, and that's probably the twenty-sixth meeting, the head before the board proposal to do a great study of what the authority would be charging the three entities for the wastewater treatment plant. It's, I'm not, we, we got three quotes and we're narrowing it down in that when we get together twenty-sixth, we'll decide on one company to do the study. I am sorry.
Is that an open meeting?
No. And getting, well, we did get some quotes to repair our roof. It's on the agenda. And we did receive our Eagle permit for the Harson's Island Nature Park. But truthfully, they, it got hacked up so much that we gotta rethink the whole project. With, yeah, they, what, what they're allowing us to do to our, our original design, it's quite a bit different. For instance, they, they had, they're requiring us to do an elevated walkway, an elevated dock, right from the parking lot all the way up to the Crispin Drain, which means we have to build a dock six hundred feet long. And just for the pipe, it's, it's gonna be two hundred grand. I mean, this dock is gonna be five, six hundred thousand dollars. And then I gotta ask myself, who's gonna drag kayaks six hundred feet, length of two football fields, to splash it in water? So like I say, I think we should rethink the whole process and, and I do have a couple ideas. Maybe we can trade some, do some wetland mitigation and trade some property that we have. But I'm gonna let it rest for a little while. I'm pretty upset about the whole project myself. The absentee ballots were made out, mailed out? Not made out. That doesn't sound good, does it? The absentee ballots were mailed out. And I was talking to George, our emergency sirens. We got all the parts for it. And they'll be going up soon. What are we getting, six total in the township? So the whole township will be covered. Actually, there's one that'll cover you guys going where the, the pump station. Blueville. And so you'll be hearing that first Monday at noon. Is that noon or one? At one o'clock they go off. I wanted to mention too, this past week, we had our, at the police, we had the hunter's safety class. That's very popular. It teaches young kids how to hunt safe. And it's, it's just more than hunting and a hunter's safety class. It teaches a lot about ethics and being polite and good sportsmanship. They had fifty. It sold out. I say sold, it's free, but in two days it was filled. And I wish we could do more but, of them, but this is all based on volunteer work for our police department. And I know the D N R people come in there. Do you guys play a role, George, in the, no? But there's quite a few other people that come in there and talk to these kids. And it, it's a great program. We had our cleanup last Saturday, our fall cleanup. And quite honestly, M G M with their, the containers, M T R couldn't do it, if you recall. They kinda dropped the ball. We requested three dumpsters on the mainland side and eight on the island. They delivered one here and four on the island. So unfortunately, we had to shut it down early. And, but we did collect over a hundred tires on the island too. I'm not sure how many we got over here. We got a pile on this side too. Right, landfill's not ready for it. So we're gonna have a tire sale soon. And we did sponsor a block party in downtown Sans Souci last week. We called it Dancing in the Street and went very well. The whole idea was we wanted to help the businesses over on the island of Sans Souci. Then have a venue where people could get together socially. And I think we had about six hundred people throughout the event. And, yeah, we were dancing in the street. It was fun. We closed the street down downtown Sans Souci. The businesses told me that Saturday night, they were busier than they were for the Fourth of July. So that was a success to help them out too. And it was a good time. So hopefully we'll make that an annual. That's all I have. That's all I have. That's all my throat can handle. Okay, any public comments? Any regular public comments? Yes, no, maybe? Anthony, you wanna say something? No, you said enough. All right, no public comments. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a board meeting minutes of October 3rd. Communication from building and zoning and status updates. Reports are the board approved EFT payments and checks paid in between meetings.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any questions or anything? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a fire, the Fire Chase Report, George.
Good evening. Fire Chase Report for September 2022. I attended one meeting, which was over on the island, the St. Clair Flats Association. The Fire Department participated in two parades, the Pied Henkel Boat Parade and the Harson's Island Lions Club Parade, which was a good turnout in both. Firefighter Association also hosted their pancake breakfast. Turnout was very well from the islanders. They really supported us and we thank them very, very much for their support. We had a visit from ISO last month. They came in and they did a four-year inspection. Normally, they do a five, but they did come in and do a four. We covered our vehicles, our equipment, personnel, training, fire responses, building inspections, fire prevention, dispatching, and also the water supply. Some positive things with this inspection with us putting the second feet over to the island and redoing our water lines, that's gonna help our ISO rating, which, once we get that completed, it'll help us out tremendously. At present time, we're five slash 510, and we should get a report within four to six months from now. Fireboat One is still out of service. We're waiting for parts from Mercury. They're still in back order. I'm looking for grants that are available out there so we can replace this boat.
How old is the boat?
It was 2005.
About 17 years.
So.
I just don't like the design of that boat.
Nope.
It's too narrow.
Yep.
I don't think it's a safe boat, boat. Especially for bad weather.
We gotta go out in bad weather. We've been out there in December when the wind's blowing and it's.
Like now.
Yep.
Chief, how often do you have the ISO come out? Is that your annually or is it biannually?
What's that?
Your ISO? How often do?
That's, that is done every five years.
Every five years?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think we covered dispatching a little bit more and also water department.
Water.
Had a little bit more in it than we did last time, so.
I thought we just did that.
Yeah, seemed like it.
Yeah, it was four years ago.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Are there more questions for George? Okay, thanks a lot, George.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, next, we have PC Saw Grant update. Anthony?
You're getting your bang for your buck this meeting.
Yeah.
So I said, I already had, I have one more presentation, so. So what's new with the Saw Grant is we reached our two and a half, two and a half year milestone. In the two and a half year milestone, we're required to submit this sewer rate methodology study. So we were on time on that. This was submitted September 21st to the state. The state recognized that we've submitted it, and so we meet our two and a half year requirements for the Saw Grant. I just want to run through in this update, some of the findings in this, in this report. I don't know if, I know Kristi had a copy of this when we submitted it and already, I don't know if all the board got to see it or not, but usually these are handled in like an annual rate study, and that when you kind of review all your rates, you'll review and update different things. But the Saw Grant requires us to determine if there's a gap in our funding. And if there is one, then we're supposed to put a plan into place to close that gap within a period of time. In all our communities around here, we're very fiscally conservative, so I've never found, as of now, I've never found a gap in any of our communities' funding where we're not actually paying what we're bringing in. Where there is potential gaps is projections out, right? Because the system's getting older, it's all from the late 70s, so it's all gonna meet its lifetime at a similar timeframe. That's just the nature of it. So what we do in this rate study is not only look at the gap, potential gap, which we did not find, but we also project out the needs of the township in the future. So I'm just gonna, I highlighted some key items here and that way I can just get right to them. So right here, this talks about rate increases over, year over year, from 2022 to 2037. Those are because in our cash model, we have to write in inflation for items like operational expenses, that just price of commodities goes up. And so you have to at least track inflation. And in our operating expenses, we have like a three and a half percent inflation rate, which is kind of small, but for like today, but inflation goes up and down, right? So you have to kind of take the average over many years. And so this one calls for a 5%. You've already implemented the first two years of this in resolutions. So your last two resolutions for rates have been tracking this, this trend. So what I found in this, what the cash model is, is that that trend needs to continue until 2037. So, and what, what that encompasses is also all projected capital expenses. And I have a table here of the major capital expenditures that, that we're gonna encounter. So what that means though for a customer is, is that a 5% increase equals 19 cents per thousand gallons. And what you've done in your resolutions, and, you know, I'll go to the, so 3.68 per thousand gallons, it actually, we dropped it, and then there's a rate increase of 73, whoops, that's the touchscreen, 73.60 per quarter. So increasing to 73.60 per quarter. So, so that's, those are small increases over time, which is the way you want to do it. You want to have rate stability. So this report talks a lot about how I come up with these numbers, the cash reserves that we need to see. But I'm gonna explain them in a table, which is much easier to understand. It talks about our population, which is not growing. Okay, so here are some of the capital expenditures, and I'm just gonna highlight that as well. So these are, these are the ones that I took into consideration. So rehabilitation of the shared collector-interceptor line, that's the one that we've got a commitment for some congressional spending, right? A million dollars. So this is the shared line with Ira Township. And so the estimated cost for the, for Clay Township's 1.6 million. That's engineering and I think there was two priority lists, priority one, priority two, rehabilitation. That amounts to 1.6, so that's in here. So the rates that I projected would cover this. It would also cover all rehabilitation that we've found required based on the Saw Grant. So we have just as much throughout the entire system as the, as the interceptor has, or our share of the interceptor has.
Joe Char included in that?
Yes, so 1.6 Joe Char's in there. The other aspect is then potential improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. These are just, because they're so far, they're farther out, and we're talking over 10, 10 years out. You always look at, this is actually, the phase one improvements, I think they've already started talking about them. And then phase two improvements are at a certain age in the wastewater treatment plant's life. You're supposed to allocate a certain amount of money of its value so that you're not found at that point in time having a major expense. You know, you want to be able to, to build up to that expense over time. So that's all been considered in this rate study. Okay, so this is something, if you've done any rate work here, you've seen our, our cash model. So this is a graph from our cash model. This kind of graphically depicts what I just explained. And so I'll just explain these little, what these things mean. So the dotted red line, that's our threshold. So that's the minimum amount of money we need to operate every year. The black solid line is basically our, our bank account position. It's the, it's our cash position that we have. And it's calibrated every year after every fiscal audit. So that, that way, every year, it becomes more and more accurate, accurately projecting out. So the more years you go back, and we're back to 2018 here, so that's pretty decent. You have four years, so you're able to project out until 2048, right there. So these tall Christmas tree looking things, these are your capital expenses, the ones that I alluded to, just, just there. So this is two in one. This is the interceptor improvements and improvements to the collection system. So put them together, this is 3.2 million. And so, actually, it's a little more than that. So there's, anyway, these are our phase one improvements in the collection system. And then this would be projected cost of the wastewater treatment plant, phase one, phase two.
So. I got a question, Anthony.
Sure.
The WWTP upgrades?
Yes.
Does that, will that be impacted with the new WWTP authority?
No, they would be, that would be your share. So seven and a half times two is 15.
I'm just saying, is that, you don't have any monetary figure for that, with the new authority, right?
No, what it is, it's based on replacement value. So when it's so far out like that, what you do is you take the replacement value of the plant and you determine percentage of that replacement value. This is all determined by industry. So industry kind of makes recommendations, like AWA and other organizations, they recommend what we should do to be responsible in rates.
Understand.
So, yeah, collection system and then two potential upgrades in the plant to bring it to the 21st century, right? So, and then just some of the other bars are just, these bars here are all revenue. So you can see the revenue grows slightly due to the interest rate and the cost of consumptions. And then here's our breakdown. So, yeah, 4.2 is because you're adding level, so level fives, which are like immediate, immediate concerns, plus that 400 is because these are fours, which, that means it's got within five years of its lifespan. So that's why there's another 400 there in the budget. Then threes, that's tentative, that's, threes, it's got a 10-year lifespan or more, so you don't really necessarily worry too much that rates won't cover the 400,000, because you do have in there year after year improvements. So then finally, yeah, I think I kind of explained that, these are the three major capital improvements. And you see, there's zero in grants, right? So we haven't talked about grants. Already alluded to the opportunities at USDA Rural Development. They're giving communities of this size, with this household, medium income, up to 40, 45% in grant on projects right now. So that's something that the fiscal year's just started for USDA Rural Development, so we're looking at that for the township as maybe an alternative to an SRF. SRF loans, we have ITAs, which are intent to applies. They don't cause, I mean, they're just basically a small couple-page letter that has this total dollar amount and says, hey, we're interested in applying. And that's it. And we're, we're putting our, it's November 1st is the deadline. So we've got one for, for our sewer system and one for our water system, so we're not left out in that program, in case we decide to opt to go that way. But after November 1st, we'll need to be talking more seriously about some of the options. And that'd be kind of the end of the Saw Grant, that'll be a part of our wrap-up, is to talk about what, what directions do we want to take with our potential improvement financing? Do we want to go, do we want to wait? Do we want to go with an SRF as a project plan? Which then, if it gets shot down, you take the project plan and you'd send it to another program? Or do you want to just go straight for a program that's got maybe more options than grants, like, like USDA right now? So we have to kind of weigh all our options.
And the SRF isn't, is really competitive and it's not really well-funded.
Yeah, it went from being like overfunded a year to two years ago, to being like twice as many requests as funds. So something happened in terms of the amount of people that were requesting money. Because it's always been about 400, 500 million, and I think what happened is the Michigan State Legislature maybe dropped the ball in projecting out what would be required of these communities, you know? And they should, they should have known after eight years of Saw Grants, that there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of projects. Well, there's a lot of discovery going on, right? They paid for it, because they paid out millions in dollars for communities to discover their problems, and then they didn't put in budgets for them to come ask for money to fix them.
Yeah.
It's hard to understand how that, how that happened. They came to me and said, well, they have 500 million this year. It was 450 the year before. And, and then they said, but we got a billion in requests. So I'm like, you didn't project out that you would have all these requests, you know? Especially big ones like, you know, Detroit, Lansing, Flint, I mean, they had huge projects in there, you know? Suck all the, the money up in the projects. So they reserve, I think it's 15% of the total amount for communities under 15,000 people. So that helps. So we're not competing against Detroit and all that, so. But it's still a small number. And then this just recaps, so there was two resolutions made by the board, which the state wanted to know that we did them on our rates. So the one was done in June 7th of 2021, and the other, that was the resolution for 2020 and, and the other one was done, what's this, 2021-18 to adjust the sewer rates. And so here I have the resolutions. There's copies of them. Oh, that was the resolution number, sorry. And that, there you go. So rate will be charged 6120 per quarter, and the sewer use fee will be 380 per 1,000. So that's what I've used in my rate study with that same projection. Because this was the previous, the 2021-18. You can see it was 73.60 and 3.68. So you see the difference?
So we are on track with the 5%.
Yep, exactly. So just keep doing what we're doing and those numbers won't do that. Now, I did this last chart just to show you what happens if we don't do anything, we don't continue doing what we're doing, where we'll be at a certain timeframe. So that black line, remember, is our bank account, right?
When do we go broke?
Yeah, so if you do nothing, if you stop doing what you're doing, and you just let it play its course, it looks like 2027, we'd be below the threshold, and then just after 2028, we'd be in some trouble. So, so that's why we have to track inflation, at least the average inflation throughout the terms, so. Yeah, and here's the, here's the printout from my model. You can see it's five, five across, well, you can't really see that. Let me zoom in. Is it better? Oh, yeah. Looks like a six, but it's not. There we go. So you can see that bottom row is rate increase, and you can see the model uses 5% across the board until 2037, and then it zeros it. So that's pretty much what I have right now. Is there any questions?
We have six months left?
Yeah, just a little less than that, yeah.
Yep.
And we'll be, we'll be wrapped up actually, because of the November 1st deadline, majority of our stuff's actually done in the next week, because we have to be, we have to hit that deadline.
Right.
So then all that's left is, we, we've already actually done our model, the hydraulic model, because the county asked us last year where we were at with our INI, you know, infiltration and inflow, and, you know, they were questioning that Clay's putting more into the sewer system than, you know, they're supposed to. So we actually had already had all that data, so we quickly did a hydraulic model for that. And that was one component of the Saw Grant. So it actually didn't cost the township. So it actually didn't cost the township anything, because we had to do it anyways. We just, we just accelerated that model so that we could defend the flows that the township's sending to the plant, so. So yeah, those were the components of the SAW, condition assessment and modeling, metering, rate study, the different categories.
You said you forwarded this to Artie or?
Uh, yeah, Artie and Christie both should have had this copy. I can send it, yeah, however you want me to send it to. Okay.
Okay. Any more questions for Anthony? Well, thank you, sir.
Yep, absolutely.
In-depth report.
So try not to make it too boring. Rate study is not exactly.
Oh, I was on the edge of my seat.
Yeah, we laughed, we cried.
I was prepared with coffee.
Yeah.
Especially that one year of 2048.
Yeah. All right, next on agenda, we have the fire department.
One second. Oh, I'm sorry. So just to verify what, you're cutting a closing statement. The INI reports that you guys had developed for the county?
Yep.
Substantiated what we had originally reported?
Yes.
Okay.
We weren't bad.
So there was no, there was no hangups or over or under infiltration into the system?
No, actually, I have data on that on my computer, but the, you have an allotment from the, from the wastewater treatment plant?
Mm-hmm.
It's .934, I think, million gallons per day.
Okay.
And so we look at that, we look at the average of clay from all our one year of, one year plus of meter reading, right, and meter data. And we have a meter at the plant that reads IRA and Clay's combined flows. We have a meter at Greenwood that brings in the stuff from the north. And then we have meters throughout the system, but we have one at Zobel Court in IRA, so we can deduct IRA from ours.
Isolate it and?
Yeah, so we had all those numbers, and we had them every two minutes for a year and a half.
Okay.
The data, so. So that, all that massive amount of data, we compiled it into monthly flows, daily maximums, and so that tells you both your surge or peak flow, if you have a rain event or something, and your averages. So in our averages category, we were under our allotted average, so that's good. I think it was 500 or 600,000, and we're allotted .9 million, so 900 and some thousand. And then when it came to peaks, that's where you start to see it get closer.
Yep.
But our peak is maxed out at 275 gallons per person per day, and we never exceeded that in the entire period of time. So those are your benchmarks that the plant is designed to handle.
Yep.
From every community. And so I think the long and short of it is, we were saying that as our township is concerned amongst the three contributors to the wastewater treatment plant, we're in our allotment and we're in our peak allowable.
And we never went over our design capacity.
Never.
Well, that's important.
Yep. So, you know, the improvements now in the system are improvements that will maintain that integrity, right? Because it's only going to deteriorate, so we want to stay on top of that as we have been, so.
Thank you.
What about the other two? They were going over and we weren't?
IRA went over once, one, actually, one event. They went over their peak flow. They never went over their design flow. They're at like 400 and something, and they're also allotted .9. And so they were each 35%. That one that was an event, and it was flooding on the Marzac Creek, that they knew the cause of it and everything and had fixed, it was a manhole that broke. And so they, they've had like evidence and, and things to prove that that was the one event, and they've fixed that since that time, and they haven't had that peak before.
Was that broken or damaged?
Damaged, yep. So it was damaged and it was subsequently repaired. Algonex flows are higher than their allotment. They're allotted 30, so 30%, because it's 35, 35, 30, and they're 45% pretty regularly, so.
Yeah, they're 45 to 50.
Yeah.
We've got some infrastructure issues.
Yeah, I live in Algonex, so I could tell you probably some of the reasons why, because I fixed them in my house, right? So one common thing that happens, which was happened when I bought my house, was the pump's hooked up to the sewer, right? And so when I told the realtor, I won't say who, what her name was, why is this connected? She said, everybody's connected like that, right? So I just had moved here, so, okay, you know, I'm from Emmett, you know, I'm in inland, right? So, you know, being on the water, you see that that's pretty common, a common practice. And you can see it in the flows, because they call that a tail. When you see the flow, a rain event, and then you see a tail in the flow, takes a while for that flow to dissipate back down to the normal, because all those pumps are running for that period of time.
Right.
Yeah, so that's something they need to get into a program and get addressed. I paid $2,000 to have a company come and run a line out to the culvert under my driveway and pump it out, so. It pumps out to the Mallard Bay, so.
Or we're addressing that with the wastewater, your new authority?
Algonex has actually been pretty proactive. They change the ordinances and, yeah, getting that taken care of.
It's a hard thing to address.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Next, fire department, North Star skid sprayer. George?
Good evening again. Fire Department's requesting permission from the board to purchase a North Star, North Star skid sprayer. When we sold our Ford pickup truck a couple months ago, the unit that we had in there was mounted in there, and it was 15, 20 years old, so it went with the truck. What we would do with this unit, this unit would go in the Chevy Silverado that we have now, and would be placed into service as a grass rig. And then, in the event that we do sell that truck, that skid unit will come out, it'll be removable and go into the next truck. It's to fight grass fires, also to provide water to our side-by-sides if we have to go out into, into fields and whatnot, to resupply those, those carry tanks on them too.
And it says it was budgeted?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the North Star skid sprayer for $3,799.99 from line item 20600097000.
Okay, motion support. Any more discussions or questions for George?
Keep it coming in.
I'm going to save us some money on shipping, I'm going to go pick it up.
It says free anyways, doesn't it?
No. It's about $700 to have it shipped.
Free shipping on orders over $49.
Yeah, I tried that, she didn't buy it.
Oh, that must have been a typo, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, George is, George is going to go pick it up, so. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And impose, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right, next we have bond payment for US Bank for our MERS refinancing our MERS account.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the US Bank MERS bonding payment with interest including $93,315.56.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, next we had, during a windstorm, we had a tree fall on our roof over here, and put some holes in it, and we got a quote from Zimmer Roofing, and they actually did a lot of roof work for us. They put the new roof in on the police station, and I think actually they did this roof too years ago, and they gave us a quote for $17,346 to do some repairs and then replace the section that needed it. He said the other two parts of the roof is probably good for another five to eight years, so he wouldn't recommend, he wouldn't recommend replacing that yet. In discussion, this quote is not a tear-off, it's, he'll go right over the existing roof, which is okay. And Chris sent me an email earlier today. I called him, because it, well, our, this is 17,000, but our insurance payoff is almost 25,000, 24,9.
27,5.
What's that?
It's 27,5.
27, is that a typo I did?
Well, you missed, you missed the recoverable depreciation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That money is reimbursed to the township, provided we make the repairs.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So the payout amount is, is actually from, the quote from Shinnard in Osborne is 27,507.
Okay. So we got about $10,000, $10,000 more from our insurance company than our quote. And so I, I called them today and asked them for a price to tear it off, the old roof, before we install this. He's out of town till Wednesday, so I won't have that number. So. I know, like.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yeah?
I think.
Or better yet, a motion.
Forsake, okay. Well, let's, I make a motion to approve the Zimmer roof quote, but I would like to add the complete tear-off of the existing rolled roofing membrane, and I would like to put a do not exceed amount of the quote, including potential insulation, in the amount of 27,507.12.
Great.
So that was kind of a mouthful.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we'd do a not to exceed.
Did we get some support?
I supported, yeah.
Thank you.
That way we can get the, get everything ordered.
So now we can talk, we can discuss, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so underneath this rolled roofing, like, it's an older way of doing projects, right? Back in the day, it was probably a cost-effective way of doing. Everything else is like a white membrane, EPDM, it's, the rest of the building structure is much newer and probably will last at least five to eight years. It was in really good condition. We don't know the substructure of what's under this portion that's above us. So I think by giving our supervisor the do not exceed amount, A, we're not dipping into any township or general funds to do building maintenance, but B, we quite possibly could get a much better system with perhaps, if required, a heavier insulation or ISO board underneath the membrane roof that's being quoted. So we're still working under the insurance dollars, not costing the township anything, but improving the product and longevity of the next system. That's kind of what the proposal said in a mouthful.
Any more discussion?
Get it started before the snow flies.
Yep. He said he can do this in the, in the winter, he can plow the snow off the roof if needed, but.
90 days just to get.
We actually received the funding today for the net.
What's that?
We received the funding today for the net claim, so whenever he's ready, yeah.
Was ever in charge of taking the roof off, and they want to dry it out before they put the wet roofing on, make sure they don't use a flame to dry the roof.
Torch. Yeah, torch.
Believe me, I've been down that road.
So we have motion and anything else? And when I do get the price, I'll email everybody what it is. Roll call, please.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have accept agreement with ambulance millage distribution from the county. As you recall, the millage passed for ambulance millage. So what we have to do is create a separate fund for this to accept it, and then we'll have to figure out a way to spend it, right, Trish? And we have, it says in the, in the resolution, how we have to track it and maintain the records for it. Difficult stuff for, you know, maintaining a new fund, so. And the mill is half a mill, so we're probably going to capture about $250, $258,000, I think about $250,000. Now we'll go into this fund, so.
Are we dispersing, as we collect the revenue, are we dispersing it to the county and then the county is sending us a check back?
Yeah, I have no idea on that.
Because it says, when I read through it, it says would be dispersed to local municipalities, so it makes me feel like as I collect, I'm dispersing.
It back to us.
And then they're dispersing back to us? No, we're, it says the township shall use the millage funds dispersed to it solely for the purpose of providing. It says over and over again that the county is.
It's restricted funds that can only be used for ambulance service and, or providing the service directly.
Right.
So in other words, we can do it ourselves, buy an ambulance, or pay someone to provide the service for us.
All right, I think what Kristi's trying to say is, we collect the taxes.
Right, we collect it.
Do we just collect it and keep it, or do we send it to the county so they can turn around and send it back?
I'm thinking we're going to send it up to them, and they're going to turn around and send it back.
That's what, in the scope of agreement 2A, that's kind of what that alludes to, right?
Yep.
The county agrees to remit to the township all monies collected by the county as a result of the assessment of the millage on the property located in the township.
Right, I'm sure we have to pay, pay, send it up there, they reconcile it all, and then give it back to us.
Would that be on the, on the budget, or would that be on a, I know it's got fun, but.
Well, yeah, we have to create a budget for it. Pretty much in and out.
Yep.
What's in, out, and then back in?
Yep. Out, in, out, in, out.
So are we going to look for options on our services?
Yes, we are.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County agreement for the ambulance millage distribution.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Kristi, you have anything?
No, I just hear if you have any questions.
Roll call, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, I believe I emailed out everybody the consent agenda, and our attorney says that we should, as a board, approve the consent judgment with Lambert versus Clay.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the consent judgment, Lambert versus Clay Township on Monday, October 17th at 7:30 PM.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussions? Roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
No.
Maureen Bory?
No.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have board member comments. Cindy?
Epsom tea ballots have been sent out. If you requested one, you should have received one by now. If you haven't, get ahold of our office and we'll see if one was processed. But they for sure should have arrived in your mailbox by now. That's all I got.
Okay. Mark?
The planning commission is on the, next Wednesday, on the 26th. I haven't seen an agenda on it as of yet, but I think it's going to be a public hearing of some sort anyway. And that's all.
Okay. Maureen?
Halloween will be coming up before our next meeting, so everybody be careful out there. And I just wanted to, you know, hopefully you can give us information on, concerned on that wastewater treatment plant situation, you know, as it's coming along.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about doing a rate study.
All right. And then what's going on with Pearl Beach that was in your report?
Just working on a permit for it.
For doing the parking lot, you said? Okay.
That's all, thanks.
Yep. Chris?
Yeah, not much. The, congratulations to the 50 young people who got their Hunter's Safety Certificate. If by any chance you were left out of that group because it was a limited number, michigan.gov/dnr, they have a program called Hunter's Ed, which really is short for Hunter's Education. It's a very comprehensive, online Hunter's Education program, and it's terrific. So if you sit down with your kid, your family member, your nephew, your niece, and take them through this program, it teaches a ton of information. And I think it should be requirement. It's so expansive. It really teaches a lot about the sport, the safety, the ethics, everything you alluded to earlier. And then you just, you line up a field day, which corresponds with things that perch point often as well. So that's the second half where you can actually go out there, display gun safety, and actually shoot to qualify for your Hunter's Education certificate. But it's a great program, so if by any chance you were interested and you got left out, look it up online. It's a great way to go.
What was the program again, Chris?
Hunter's Ed.
Didn't know.
You found it, michigan.gov/dnr, or just Google search it, Hunter's Ed. Great program.
Good. Chrissy?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Yeah, the exponent on that, Chris, too, I always wanted us to, and it's a problem. I wanted ORV and safety class too.
Yeah.
And it's just hard to even get certified to teach one. And they're not around at all. And I've been saying, boy, I wish we can get a safety class for our kids, you know, on proper handling ORVs. Because we have accidents with them, that's for sure. I thought the bump and run event in Algonex last weekend was pretty cool. It was a good event. And like Maureen said, Halloween's coming. I think Halloween, that lasts for like a month, doesn't it? By the time October 31st comes around, I'm like, what, more candy? But be safe out there with Halloween. So thanks for coming and lots of positive stuff going on in our community.
Motion.
Motion?
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Okay. Sounds good. Thanks for coming, everybody.